I'd like to call this committee in the hall meeting for order June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh two P M. First, I'd like to recognize that we're on thirty-five territory. Traditional land of the indigenous way, three nation and homeland with the making and we are all. Next, I'd like an approval of the agenda. Councilor Fitzpatrick, Councilor Holber, all favor. Period. Next, I'd like to go to community comments and feedback. Anybody has a question or comment on the connected agenda, please come forward, state your name.
Ron Madat, twenty-eight street. I have a question about the last meeting and what I've heard on the radio that you're looking into selling off eighty-nine acres of city land. Uh, there was virtually nothing for information that came with that resolution. So I'm uh stuck with doing my own math on it and according to my math, that's just over twenty-three million dollars. The value that I would be charged if I were to buy a piece of land like that. Now, is it safe for us to assume that there shouldn't be any more tax increases? Tax increases through this term with that extra twenty-three million dollars?
Anthony.
So council weighed its options when it was uh selling the land. One of the things is normally when the land is sold. And the tax or the money from that sale is collected, that money is then used to develop the land up to the developer's needs. The other way to do it, much like other cities like Winnipeg and others, is actually sell the land very cheap and put the development cost on to the developer. So that's what council's done in this case, is that the land is for a very low sale value. And return, the developer assumes the liability of developing that land up to the city standards.
Okay, good enough. I'll take another tax increase coming.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, any feedback? Third and final time, any more comments, any feedback?
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Green. I live at forty-three Cobalt. A question for council, if they could advise me of all the walkways that are in the city of Thompson between pro- personal properties. Who is in charge of cutting the grass on those walkways and who is in charge of garbage cleanup on those walkways?
Thank you, Patrick.
It depends if the city owns it or not. If it's city-owned land, the city would be responsible for the garbage and for the cutting of the grass. Um, if it's privately owned walkways or privately owned garbage, then they'd be responsible. Um, most of our student crews that we hired don't start until July, once the s- uh school season's out, so a number of them have not been cut yet.
So how do you know the walkways are city-owned or private-owned? If they're walkways with concrete, they not belong to the city between, not, they're not between buildings. They're between areas.
The entire city is mapped out. So it would be mapped out as to what the city owns, and the department clears what the city owns. The ones that are privately owned, those ones wouldn't be cleared by us, they'd be cleared by whoever owns.
All right, then the walkway, I'll be more specific, walkway outside of my property at twenty-five Duke Place. Who owns that walkway?
I couldn't actually done the spot, I'd have to get back to you.
Wouldn't get back to her.
Okay, there's been garbage piled up on that walkway for three years. Over three years probably, uh couches, beds, mattresses, home furnishings. People just use it as a dumping area, never mind all the garbage that blows in there. Because none of the grass gets cleaned up or nothing. I've had to go in there myself personally. And try to clean their area up so that it doesn't affect or damage the fence that I've built around the property. As, as you all know, when grass grows like that high. It can ruin, start to rot a fence or rot a vehicle, it can do any number of damages. I've gone in there, cut the property, cut the grass myself. Uh, so I'd like to know who I would send the builder.
Uh, which, okay, so twenty-five Duke and what's the other address that would be beside?
Would be.
Walkway would be between.
Twenty-seven would be, in my guess, on the other side. Is that how they work?
Twenty-nine.
Cause we have twenty-three and twenty-five, then there's a walkway, and then the next property, I'm not sure what the.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll send a bylaw inspector to have a look at that, and we'll have to get back to council on that one. Okay, thank you.
One more time, any comments or community feedback?
Sure, one more. Uh, now we're approximately a month past the normal deadline for budget, have budget discussions started.
There's been internal discussions amongst the administration on the budget, as well as discussions with the province. Tomorrow night, council's meeting with a number of the community entities, and then they'll be moving into their other budget deliveries.
So no actual discussion with council?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna go into uh reports. Five point one, our CFP report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think this is distributed to Mayor House already, you guys all have a copy of it, so um. I might know everything, everything, just with finding details, but uh, the noteworthy stuff here, uh, year-to-date here. Um, this is inclusive of May, obviously not June. Um, we're noticing obviously the increases, um, and it's all directly related to the bottom line, their prisoners. Um, we're up almost forty percent, and you are prisoner of laws this time last year, the end of May. Um, and then obviously CD increases in this year. And so on, which are the social disorder calls primarily responsible, so. By a prisoner, um, because they're being arrested and they're being watched, so in the public sort of goals, thirteen percent. The rest of it, uh, very similar to last year as far as uh persons crime, the serious offenses, assaults, mental health is in there as well. You can see that there are public relations has been actively involved in the community, there's a number of events there, twenty-three total actually. That they've attended uh throughout the city, um, but you know, nickel days, uh, we're on the cusp of that, parades. Uh, National Indigenous Day this Wednesday, um, which they'll be very active in, and just a few uh photo clips as a result of those uh events. Um. For crime prevention, crime reduction, community safety, so this is our annual performance plan, uh, some of the initiatives, um, and I'll just briefly touch on them, I know, um. You're obviously familiar with it, cause there was consultation done, we created her. But uh. These downtown blitzes, obviously, uh, we started them in April, there's an updated one from May. The numbers were as uh highest April, uh, which is what we like to see. Hopefully that was effective, and then this time, uh, this month, obviously on the custom nickel days, you're gonna see a large increase in police presence through the week. Um, in the community. And I would venture to guess these stats will be inflated for next report. There. And we'll talk on issue two, because we talked about that for a lengthy amount of time last week. I've been told by uh the liquor inspector that they have hired a second liquor inspector for the city of Thompson. Um, there will be two in the community this week as well, um, working with us over the nickel days period. And they're looking to have the new hire, I don't know who it is, um, kind of trained up and boots on the ground a bit. So hopefully we can uh work with them and uh address some of the issues which we've uh been working with, with Dave Cool on. Over Dave's situation, he's responsible for all of Northern Mass open, so he's pretty thin, so hopefully this uh, this will help. And that's all I've got, unless you have any questions?
Anyone have questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we're gonna go uh community safety officer program.
Funny. Um, so the community safety officers are continuing to do life patrols of the third community, um, there. As well, they are working with the RCP once a month, every single twelve hours shift. Uh, they will be working uh during nickel days on Friday, Saturday, sorry, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, from two P M to two A M. Um, they are noticing that uh the numbers are increasing in the community with the nicer weather. Um, they're transporting pretty people to the human center in the alone, uh, it went up from thirty-three for seventy-one in May. Um, they're also noticing there's a lot of our open liquor, as well as increased, um, from one nineteen in April to three hundred and forty-two fours in May. Um, so they are noticing that there's a lot, a lot more people in the community.
Thank you, any questions? Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know what, I've talked to him, I had the other question, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing that, thank you, Sonia, for that report. Uh, next, we're with public safety.
Uh, so for public safety for the taxi, the vehicle law passed on May twenty-third. And there were meetings held after the bylaws didn't pass, uh, there's meetings held with the taxi industry, as well as the dispatch companies. Um, we had a total of twenty drivers and orders attend, um, at first meeting, we did have two different meetings to try to accommodate, uh, their schedules. And with the dispatch companies, two of the three companies, uh, attended, and there was no, uh, there's no overall issues with, with the bylaw at all. Um, for animal control, I want to get back on taxi, uh, we will be doing this Thursday, there will be a taxi, um, lotto. And that will take place this Thursday here at City Hall, um, there will be a member from the. Industry will be there to take all the numbers and put the numbers uh into the basket. And then we'll probably have our CFP members on the uh do the actual draw. I think we have the members here, um. That can be something that Carol can use. Yeah, so there were sixty, uh, seventy-one invitations sent out to the entire industry. Uh, we had sixty-six applications, uh, that came in for the draw for the two, um, hand event that they're gonna be doing the draw for. So animal control, um, there are some concerns right now, or some issues with the December break at the uh Thompson Humane Society. Um, so we're not currently housing any of our pets at the Humane Society right now, we're using uh the city pound. Uh, which is the, um, what we used to use before we had the Humane Society. We have to do that for at least six to eight weeks, um, because the pets that did have December, they still shed, I guess, their virus for up to six to eight weeks. Um, so we're gonna continue to have to use the, um, the pound until such time that saved to go back to the Humane Society. So with any animals that we do get caught, we have one animal control officer, so he's trying to have to be going in. Um, on the weekends, um, to take care, and weekends and evenings to take care of the pets, let them out and whatnot. We are looking for, um, we had some foster homes that could take the few pets that we do have. Um, however, if there were foster homes, they can't have, um, other pets in their home, um, because they could, uh. The December is contagious, and those pets could, uh, can get it. So if you know anybody, it's okay, we're looking, we can contact either Darren or Peral to let them know. Um, we have the bylaw inspector, um, he's working a mixture of days and evenings, uh, we have an increased number of bylaw fractions, particularly. He's also dealing with a lot of property standards. Um, and the RCP of issue, we've got a hundred and sixty-four tickets in May for various, um, behavior issues such as, uh, traumatic disorderly biting, hearing, public. Um, and those bylaw factions are placed into our system, we can keep the stats on those. Um, going down through this stats for animal control. Um, citizen complaints received thirty-four from May, um. Which is, is uh, credit from April, we had eighteen. Uh, today, we have two hundred and thirty-three dogs registered, um, two fourteen last month, and we have twenty-six cats that are registered today. Um, going down into the bylaw staffs, uh, you'll notice like handicap parking went from eight in April to forty-five. Park Street on Park Street, eighteen to thirty-seven, so, uh, we're noticing a big increase, um, with having the bylaw inspector work, uh, of various evenings. If we're gonna be starting to meet and probably as well.
Okay. Thank you, any questions? Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first question is about the taxi uh portion. So you say you have meeting with them, do you guys take minute when you guys meeting with them?
Um, I have to ask Carol, Carol had a meeting with them, I was never able.
In general, what I'm saying, when you guys have meeting with those, uh, the owner or something, do you guys take minute?
I do take notes as to, so if somebody has a question or something we have to follow up on, I will take that. We also do take attendance, so we know how many people are there.
If you want to see the minute, do we have a way to look at it?
It's no.
If I want to see it.
It's just notes, so it's just, you know, so-and-so asked this question, and I definitely think it's not anything elaborate.
So if I wanna add for the, uh, notes, so you can provide if I do ask.
Yes.
Thank you. Second part is animal control. Uh, the first one, you said due to the Humane Society current housing that problem, they have some issue there. So you have to take those back to our city house, so what is, do, do we, does it impact to our staff, uh, to look after those animal for the time being?
Yes, so we have one animal control officer, so he will have to go into the pound to take care of those pets that are at the city pound. So he'll have to go in and take, let go to the washroom and let the beanie on the house.
How's the facility, uh, at this moment for the city power? I know we never used it for probably decade now, so how that, uh.
We went in, the carpenters, uh, Harold's go ahead, work with our winners and some other, but then they cleaned it all up, so. Um, it's, it's in pretty good condition right now, obviously still, but it is in good condition right now, we're not really using it.
So if we decide want to continue using that facility, is it possible?
Uh, we would have to speak to the, I, I believe there's some, uh, structural roof, roof issues and everything, so we'd have to work with the building inspector to see if it would be.
So my last question to the animal control, so since the six to eight weeks, uh, that we are taking care of. Do we, uh, deduct the payment to Thompson, uh, Humane Society, because we do pay them for money, uh, look after those, so do we deduct those six to eight weeks?
Well, there's still pets that belong to the city on, there's one that, uh, the, uh, the Humane Society right now that is the city pet. Um, so they still do have a paddle very long to us. Um, and I guess that will be a discussion that we would have to break forward, we're really doing any deduction.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilor Woodroper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the question is related to the community safety and lobbying plan, um. You know, we had talked previously about, um, updates on that, from that committee or from it, sorry, not from the committee, but. Administration, uh, coming forward as part of our public safety updates at these meetings, so I'm just wondering where things are happening.
Anthony?
Uh, we'll just have a discussion after, I think we did add that to the agenda, let's hope to tell wants to read an update. Whether it's an update for myself to council, or if it's an update through the director.
Thank you. Councilor Tom?
Thank you, Madam.
Uh, what's the purpose of getting a dog and cat license? What's the purpose of it?
So if you have a dog license, um, in order to get your dog license, it has to be vaccinated against rabies. So if that dog bites somebody and is at least registered, we know that the dog's been vaccinated against rabies, so that person would be, um. You know, viable to get rabies if he got bit by a dog. Um, if it's licensed as well, if they call into the, into the city, we can find, uh, the owner of the pet. Because we have, we, we keep track of it here at City Hall, so there's a number on the tag, so we can find it where the dog lives. And if we knew where the dog lived or the cat lived, then we'd bring the cat home. And most of the times, it is the first time that dog was running at large, it wasn't a nuisance, um. They don't, the animal control officer would usually bring them home and not charge them as long as the pet was registered, we get kind of a once we ride home.
So do you consider that is just protect the, the resident of Thompson by the tax? The safety of the people, so that you can get the, some kind of rabies or anything in case that happened?
It's a sense of security, I think, of people knowing if the pet is vaccinated against rabies, if they've been licensed to be here. That's part of that, um, anomaly on if they're vaccinated or not.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing that, thank you very much, honey. Next, we're gonna go Thompson Fire and Emergency Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first off, my apologies, what you don't have before you was the, uh, the monthly stats report, I apologize, uh. We're not getting that due to time matter, so we'll go with stats report first, and then we should be, uh, into the station report. So on the fire responses for the month of May, uh, we had forty, uh, forty responses with four general runs activated. Year-to-date, we have a hundred and eighty-six total calls, uh, compared to last year, two hundred and thirty-six, which is a drop of nine percent, approximately twenty-one percent. On the ambulance side, another busy month, we had a total of seven hundred and sixteen calls. Uh, for the month of, uh, for the month of May, year-to-date was just shy of thirty-five hundred. Uh, which is approximately two hundred and ninety plus, but with the year-to-date with an increase of nine percent. On the EMS side, on the inspections and, and prevention, uh, we did a total of eleven inspections for the month of May. Uh, with one fine totaling forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, year-to-date, we had twenty-five, which is, uh, an increase over this time last year of thirteen. From the fire kits and inspections and whatnot, they're, they're, they're steadily getting the reports from upstairs with respect to renewals and, uh. Uh, new installs, so we had five new installs, uh, for the month of May with eighteen renewals generating, just shy of about twelve hundred dollars. Year-to-date, last year was seven to forty-five. And, uh, over this time last year, we had three totaling twenty-nine hundred people's side. Um, there's no questions on that, I'm working through the station report.
Does anyone have any questions on? Okay, oh, Councilor Ross?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, I looked at one of your, one of your report, uh, regarding the EMS, uh. Oh, hundred eighty-two point eight hours.
I was getting to that.
Oh, yeah.
This was just.
Yeah, if I may.
Go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, uh, we attended the Manitoba Association Fire Chief Conference in Steinbeck on May thirty-first to June third. Theme of the conference was mental health for first responders, many speakers from B C, including a primary physician out of Alberta. Uh, we had chief Greg Jones from Halifax, we had some rock readings from the Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs, we gave group town wildfire situations in Alberta, Scotia. Uh, the fuel up mitigation reduction continues around Thompson so far, to see if Thompson has issued over twenty salvage permits to residents, with focus being River Road. Along the Bourbon River, so the, uh, word about this spreading, uh, great toward communities, we're seeing some, uh, some mitigation going on along the River Road. We have to keep that open up for the general public. Uh, Thompson Fire Emergency Services and Manitoba Wildfire Service held, held a stakeholder meeting here on May thirtieth at Monkey Head at City Hall. To review and discuss the community wildfire protection plan, so we've reviewed it, the, uh, currently reviewed and discussed the plan. And we'll update the plan and send it to our various stakeholders in our community. Uh, we do have a tabletop scheduled later to follow, uh, this month or maybe July, we'll send it out. How the fire progresses in, in the north. Our calls for service continue to go up anticipating a busy summer provided EMS calls from January first to May thirty-first. T F S had a total of unavailable duty time for ambulance of a hundred and eighty-two point eight hours, which equates to approximately eight days. Where there was no ambulance, uh, service for the city of Thompson. Uh, you can expect to see that, uh, number, obviously the increase in the, in the, in the second half of this year. Uh, as we don't foresee a, uh, the calls for service dropping anytime soon. On May twenty-third, T F S joined Thompson R C P in celebrating their hundred and fiftieth anniversary of leasing in Canada, cake and coffee was provided for two to three over at the R C P event. On May twenty-fifth, the city of Thompson hosts a twelve-hundred-sixty evacuees from the community across native wildfire. Various organizations came forward to assist the city of Thompson during the evacuee stage, so thank you all for your help in helping those in need. And of course, last, we had Premier Stephenson visit the hall, uh, earlier this month and spoke with firefighters and administration, discussed the challenges we and they are. Are facing, and, and we had a very encouraging meeting and expect to see some changes in the near future, which, um. The four highlights from the, uh, from that meeting was the obviously conservative purchase agreement between the city of Thompson and Shared Health. Uh, we had some staffing, uh, staffing issues as well, and we discussed the, uh, revisiting the fire paramedic program to be offered here at Ork. Through our, uh, through our U C N. And of course, uh, discussions on the, uh, new project. Thank you.
Questions? Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry that I had you. So when I look at this, uh, hundred eighty-two point eight hours, you're talking about five months period, right? So average about thirty-two hours a month. That's pretty much accurate, right? So my question is, since the thing is rising. Do you have any suggestion and, uh, any planning, how can we mitigate that? The reason I'm asking this is like, we have any trouble to employ the EMS, that's, that's a challenge across the board. So the number is rising, we still don't have a staff. Any planning to, to, to mitigate?
Yes.
So can you share this?
I can, I, I can share with you right now that we are holding a, uh. A two-day recruitment, uh, in the month of July for. Three candidates that are licensed and ready to go with respect to bringing in ambulance on the, on paramedic side. Uh, that does not backfill our entire allotment of four, so those, I mean, certainly has an improvement. Uh, with respect to the vacancy rate now seventeen percent in our station, four members. Uh, for bill, so we're hoping to fill those three positions with them there, and I've also advised the city manager with respect to another alternate plan. Um, moving forward with respect to, uh, increasing staffing levels downstairs. But the first thing is first, we need to get our service person in, uh, in place for the city of Thompson, and then with respect to. The staffing, resources, revenues that will follow once we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the city administration had seen this coming about two years ago, two and a half years ago, which is why we developed a proposal. For a fire paramedic program to be established in the north. Unfortunately, that wasn't taken up by some of our partners at the time, but if it had been taken up as we had prepared it. Uh, back two years ago, we'd be getting our first graduates out of it right now. Um, so it's unfortunate it wasn't taken up, but that doesn't even, even bad in it, that's why it was brought with Premier Stephenson as a priority for the city. That if we have to maintain our staffing, we have to move on that program now. So it's something that we did see coming, uh, the action didn't happen with our partners, but we still hope that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So if I hear you right, uh, you say right now we are seventy percent.
We are seventy percent eighty-two.
So if, let's say you manage to get the seven, seventeen, right? So is that mean that they go help the hour shortage? No, still not.
Okay, he here is more resources. He is to have another ambulance staff, in order to staff that third ambulance that's currently, uh, covered with overtime. Is to hire an additional eight to ten more members. To per, per.
So if I, if I may say that, so the, the means the charge would be going this way. Forever, right? Because the call would be wrong.
Yes.
And if you add more staff, it goes wrong, so your, your, your charges could be twain half all the time, right? There's no way we can come back to that bit, there's no way, pretty much, right?
Anthony, you know, so even if the calls are increasing, there are different models used, different places, so. There are abilities that you could, the city could run a stretcher service, like, much like the city of Winnipeg does, where employed, I believe, E M Rs.
E M Rs, that's right.
Um, who are dual fire paramedics, so there, there are a number of models that are being looked at to tackle with those increasing numbers. But none of that is viable until there's a service purchase agreement in place that covers the reality of the numbers that we're seeing. So the department is looking at different ways that they could respond to that, so if the resources aren't spread too thin. Or to get people with lower levels of training to do lower risk activities, um, but none of that is viable until that service purchase.
Yeah, thank you, man. Thank you, Stephen.
Councilor Don Har?
Yeah, so, I think sometimes we forget, it's like committee meetings, so, uh, that's more. One of the things was, I know that we talked to a premier about was the, another ambulance, or how many we're gonna need, because. They discussed with us a few years ago with Shared Health. We weren't sure how much things were gonna change, I don't know, we met as well, and we, you met after. I don't know if that was discussed further over, and, uh, staff, um. And I'm just trying to get us to, with all the lobbying we're doing. We need to know how many ambulances we're really gonna wind up needing, so that when, and if, we need, what were we gonna start that on? So we need a new, uh, a building or, or more space to house ambulances. We already had an issue concerned about the size of our, our engine that we purchased last year. Originally, it wasn't gonna fit, so just asking, I know those things are probably being included, and I just wanted to say it while we're on TV, I guess, to make sure that. Just asking, I know those things are probably being included, and I just wanted to say it while we're on TV, I guess, make sure that. We're looking at that as well. I'm right.
Thank you, any other comments? Thank you, and I'd like to thank Thompson Fire and Emergency Services and the Union uh for performing a very successful barbecue uh last Friday, two nineteen for. Fellow coworker that is battling cancer, I'd like to also thank the R C M P for their attendance there. And all the city administration staff that uh council that showed up that day, thank you all very much, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
We just, sorry, we raised, we raised, on that note, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, we raised. Over twenty three hundred dollars in a span of two hours, so again, much, much appreciated, and the family, and the rest of the ground, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move into number six, finance. Six point one is a review of tax added and tax. Anthony.
So this is the regular housekeeping item where the province of Manitoba does changes to the assessment based on buildings are improved. Um if there's changes where they're decreased in their uh valuation, new businesses are open or businesses are closed, so. You see a touch that there's taxes added and then two taxes canceled. Uh the request would be if there's a consensus, a council, bring this forward for a resolution so that the changes can be made on the roll, just like we've done in other past times.
Okay, I'm sure Hans is ready to move forward. Okay, that's been moved forward, uh next we have uh taxes canceled, appendix B two dash two thousand twenty three.
Um I covered all three together, yeah, so the chart design plus the taxes.
About we'll be moving on to. Uh next, number seven, development and technical services. A letter from uh seven point one, it's a letter from M K O, missing a murdered indigenous women, girls. Maison unit in regards to the M M I W G monument. Uh Kyle, are you?
Yeah, good evening, Mary Council, uh so back in early May at a committee meeting, uh this request we brought forward, as you recall, it's uh. We're looking at a monument up by the uh Molotov Bridge. Uh after communication and and conversation, uh there's a request taken back from council to see if uh anything we're interested in just out here at City Hall. This basically just that will confirms that, yes, they they do let that spot. And uh they've actually provided, as it's in your briefing package, some images, just what the monument looked like. Essentially, it's basically ongoing corner, so they've modified their request to the city. Uh basically now, uh what they're asking is the the land transfer for the monument's site or permission to use the property. The utilization of the city hall parking lot, uh with hosting events. Uh the maintenance of a monthly electrical bill for the monument, we don't know what that is from that table hydro yet. Uh test holes for the foundation design, which would roughly cost seven thousand dollars, and then the two twenty five for piles and pile cap. Or pad, which is about twenty five thousand dollars, so uh. We we've got the kind of location, I think, uh to what council had wanted, uh now there are some in kind and and financial requests from uh M K.
Thank you, I would just uh like to say a thank you to Councilor Chong, who they also took me out one day to show me. Uh the spot where he figured the monument would go, so appreciate that very much, sir, thank you. With that being said, have we got comments, questions? Councilor Chong.
Uh thank you. Uh I look at the picture down there. Is the menu is above ground or just live on on the surface of the ground?
The monument will stand above ground, yeah, so I don't have the exact height, but there is a above ground.
Because what I'm concerned about is uh mid the time the snow, you know, if it's on the surface of the ground, maybe cower the menu. Right, but the snow, I'm talking about. That's that's the only concern I have.
Okay, thank you, um. Councilor Long.
I don't know if that, we still don't have the numbers or the cost of what pilings would be or what kind of lights, so we could get a estimate on most things.
No, we estimated that they provided their manuals, all we've got right now, it's as I understand, it's clearly that an estimate.
All I'm saying is I'd like to wait till before we take this to council, I'd like to get some numbers that are turned up, I really do want to get this there. Um but I think I see some numbers for it.
Anthony.
So council's interest in moving this forward, we just ask for consensus that we get it drilled. So that we could then design, have the foundation designed and bring you back the cost, that the cost could then go into your budget. So if that's the consensus at council, I believe we have a drill, we're gonna be bringing forward a resolution shortly. To hire a drilling company for some other work that council's already approved, we could tack this drilling onto it since they're already up here. Um and then that would give the engineers the ability to design the foundation and give you a cost, but you're well informed on what it would cost.
I shall announce, is in favor of that? Gary.
Good morning, mayor.
Yeah.
I'm I'm more interested to know, would it be, at the end, we gotta know exactly where that could be located? Because that's that's a wide area over there, which is. Is it gonna be more towards to the highway or more towards into the parking lot?
I think that's where the drilling will help tell us where it's the most stable for the ground, but there's also the consideration that some of those trees are memorial trees. So have to look at how are they gonna be shaded, I believe those are memorial trees to pass counselors and mayors. So we have to make sure we don't kill the trees that are there at the memorial, so that would have to be worked on in finer detail.
And then there's also the required setbacks from the roads and the right ways that we have to line it, so kind of between all three of those, you'd have to complete the exact.
So I think hearing that there's a consensus, we can work on that finer detail now.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you, Madam. Um when this comes back to us, can we ask for a breakdown um of the budget that includes the funding and the estimated budget costs? I know that in their letter, they're referencing that they were granted some. Um funding for this project, but the letter isn't really clear what portions um. They're funding and what they're asking us to fund, like it has the estimates for the city's portion, but it would be nice to know all of the, we have a breakdown of all the costs.
Yeah, we could request a.
I think by this moving forward, that'll be the next step, we can get into the finer details. Thank you. Uh seven point two is a memo from the Director of Development and Technical Service. In regards to a contract with R G Business Solutions to provide chief building inspector services for the city of Thompson. Kyle?
Yeah, so uh previously, uh we've had that R G Business Solutions provide us uh assistance with regards to achieve building inspector role. Uh with Dan Hayward recently being uh promoted into that role, uh that leaves a vacancy as the building inspector. We wanna be able to give Dan vacation, and we wanna be able to have Dan has his sick time or anything like that. So we'd like to be able to retain and and prolong, uh put another one year contract in place to have R G Business Solutions. Uh can it be one using terms as the previous contract, uh Dan will uh. Dan and Blaine liaise all the time uh currently, uh also with the addition of the cloud permit software. It makes things that much more easier, we're out of the bundle up drawings and and applications, we scan them to 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 blame. Uh they are already online and and Blaine has full access, so uh the request this evening is to um. Extend the existing contract by a period of one year, uh we are looking to get the role of uh the uh. Building inspector, which is Dan's role, to get that completed and get that filled. Uh then we will know what the level of training is regarding required for that uh for that individual, and that would then set us up for the uh set us up in the future.
Councilor Oberdorff? Very old, you just, okay, Councilor Wong?
Good afternoon.
Good morning, mayor. Uh just a quick question about this contract, are they based on overall performance or based on monthly uh rate?
It's a flat monthly rate, if the individual travels to Thompson, uh there are travel costs reimbursed. If we ask them to attend a meeting in Winnipeg, there's a flat rate for attending meetings in Winnipeg, but it's it's basically a flat uh flat monthly cost. Flat monthly fee.
So is it possible to renegotiate different terms, because what I heard yours, your your reason of extend the contract. And you wanna give Dan a vacation, Dan a secret, so it could be just maybe two weeks in a year, or maybe. Four weeks in the year and some like that, right? So for a year, year long, this uh contract, I think is kind of like. Not necessary, if we can rewrite the contract or negotiate with. When we have to bring him out, pay for the fee to come out, even hourly or daily rate, that would be more preferred in my opinion to. Because I based on what you explained, the reason.
Yeah, the the other one is the right now, again, Dan is new into the role. Right, it provides that mentorship and that uh that uh. Experience for Dan to continue to grow, so that's the other thing with with that trip with Ryan. Blaine's been a chief building inspector for a number of years, and and Dan uh yes, is qualified and and yes, is certified by the Congress. But again, that mentorship will provide a year, so let's speak to each other.
Absolutely, I I think he's a very experienced person, I I've got nothing, uh problem with that, I just, based on the the reason. And the money spent, I just suggest that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Oberdorff? Thank you, Madam Mayor, um I have two questions, so the first one is regarding um the vacant in position, I would assume that. We have salaries that are already being budgeted for that position that can be used to cover the contract.
The vacant position's a unionized position, so it would have to be used for hiring a unionized employee, so could it be used towards management?
The second question is. If we have the option to end the contract, should we fill that position before it expires?
I believe they have thirty day notice.
Is this thirty day notice in the contract, I can't, I don't, I'd have to confirm that, but I'm pretty sure the thirty day is in there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh if I'm getting you right, is he paid salary all year or only when he's?
Right now it's a retainer, so it's flat fee per month every, if you come to town, then there's additional costs. If he's uh attended, like I said, if he attended the meeting in Winnipeg, it's an additional cost.
Thank you.
So it's essentially a retainer.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilor Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so you said Dan and Blaine, they uh. They communicate back, of course, quite regularly.
Yeah.
And uh he, Blaine was our previous chief building inspector?
Uh yes, I mean, it's a contract, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so now, uh and as you said, Dan's new into the role. Like I could see some, I could see value in keeping an amount for a year or two, as you say mentors, no different than being a. An apprentice position, basically. Ready to learn, to learn better from an experienced person. I can see value in myself.
Anyone else? I, Anthony?
Oh, sorry, you're gonna.
I was just gonna make a comment that I definitely see value in, especially if we look at the amount of building permits this year alone have have increased so. So far, and to have Blaine's experience for Danny to reach out to uh is good, or for Danny to or Blaine to think over some of Danny's work when he needs to. And that gives time, if we do hire that junior position, you know, uh the between the two of them, I think would be a better training process. Uh in the long run, and it wouldn't be so taxing on Danny, so I definitely uh think it would be a good idea, Anthony, sorry.
Yeah, I guess my request would be a clarification from council, is there a preference to stick with the one uh the monthly retainer model that's being proposed? Or does council want us to try to negotiate something differently? So council could clarify that, and we'd know how to proceed.
Okay, so first I'm gonna ask if uh council is prepared to, yeah, question first, yeah?
No question, I just, I I would suggest to do the uh.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask, uh who was in favor of keeping him on the monthly retainer for the next year? Uh by Sean Hans, who was in favor of that? Okay, uh who's uh would rather have him paid uh by the out where he works? Okay, uh monthly retainer is what will be approximately for his retainer as his first contract now, thank you. Uh next is uh public safety, it's a memo from the programs manager in regards to requests from Councilor Wong, uh read the shopping cart bylaw.
I was asked to look into the shop, into a shopping cart bylaw, we do have shopping carts included under our solid waste bylaw. Um they're considered litter, so shopping carts that aren't in a mall or the parking lot are considered litter, and um. So they uh. So we can pick that we normally public works, we pick those shopping carts up and then we would charge back to the mall, or to the store rather, but however um. The only time you can charge them back is if they actually redeem them, and and they haven't been redeeming the shopping carts, so. Then you end up with a bunch of shopping carts in your parking, in your public works. Um. But it is, it is included under our uh our literary bylaw, under our solid waste bylaw, there is infection there.
Thank, thank you. Uh Anthony?
Yeah, this was a request from uh Councilor Wong, so I'd I'd recommend that Councilor Wong explain uh any of the concepts that he wanted administration to look in. So that council can discuss them and provide us direction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, and uh the reason I would bring this up, because I've seen there's a lot of car all over your town. So when I look at the fine, forty two dollars, a big corporation don't even care, this is chongqing. So I'm not really, my objective is not about money grabbing and then. Maybe perhaps we can, we can come up some sort of idea, like in Winnipeg, there's a lot of shopping center, they have a locking wheel system. So which man, which is meaning, let's say Walmart has a card, they only go up to cer- certain area boundary, they cannot go more than that, so. If the people try to take it away, they need to push all the way to Westwood, no way, it's locked up. So maybe that's another way of dealing with all this uh cut all over town. Another reason I wanna bring this up, because I've seen a lot of people using that card. And flip it upside down, become a chair, so they can sit all over the world, I mean, so. If we can come up some sort of solution, well, perhaps. You can discuss with the management, or come up with a locking wheel uh bylaw. It means like if they, they wanna provide a shopping cart, they must have locking wheel installed, stuff like that. I mean, the dollar is kind of work in a way, but I find it a problem. So that's why I think the dollar for the car, the reasons like they have, they must bring it back if they wanna get back the dollar, but looks like. Still not working, so maybe locking wheel is the way to go. I'm not a full solution, but I'm just suggesting, anything we can do just to help out all this problem around downtown.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, so I see multiple ways that council could approach this, um you'd have to do it under your spheres of jurisdiction, under section two thirty two of the municipal act. Um that allows you to basically create bylaws or enforcement, um how you'd like to approach it. Um I know in the past, the mayor and I have met with the mall owner, as well as with Walmart, and brought up the locking shopping carts. And asked them to do that voluntarily, but that is not, that has not happened obviously to date. Um we would have to check with our legal counsel, and I know uh Carol has looked at other jurisdictions, there aren't too many. That treat them um have standalone shopping cart bylaws, most of them have them as nuisances or as fines or as litter. Um but there might be ways under the municipal act, so if council wanted us to pursue this further, I'd have to engage legal counsel. Just to see what our options are there, um and if there's any preferred approaches, and I see Carol has her hand, her hand up on what could be possible.
Thank you, so Ontario is big on the shopping carts uh the bylaws, and what they require there, they they put it back on to the the owner of the shopping carts. And they ask them for a shopping cart management plan, so each store would have to provide them a plan for the shop, or what they're gonna do with the shopping carts, how they're gonna get them back.
Thank you. Uh anybody else? Uh Anthony?
So really council discussion to provide us direction, do you want us to invest the time in it or not? So we have to know if this is what you're interested in, if it is, then we will pursue this further, but we need to hear from you, council.
I shall answer, which is the.
I'm sorry, for door.
Tom, for you. I have a question for Councilor Wong, with the locking wheels, if they don't really understand how it works, if you could just explain more.
I think somehow they can.
I can address that, so we spoke with them, what a lot of the malls and uh down south are doing now, it's almost like radio fencing, almost like a dog collar fencing. So they attach some sort of a unit to their shopping cart, and then when it gets to a certain boundary outside of that property, it locks, I don't know, one wheel or all the wheels. Um so that that shopping cart cannot leave, or makes it very difficult for it to leave that property. So that's what we'd suggest that they use at their malls here, because of what we're seeing, but they haven't done so yet.
Okay, so with that being said, would we like management to look further into some of our choices?
Councilor.
Dan, you were done, sorry.
One more question.
One more question. Um I guess my other question would be how much resources we would be required to put into this and. Um what we think the result will be. Do we think that it's going to be successful or it's going to reduce the amount of carts that we have through the community? That if we did end up proceeding this way, I guess, to be my only concern.
I couldn't predict the results. Um really, it's whatever council's priorities are, so this is something council has to prioritize. I believe uh the group was looking to amend the animal bylaw and building standards, so it would just be those timelines would be adjusted. So internally, we would have to say, instead of getting an animal one in two months, you might get in three months. But we would have to work around that internally once we have directions.
I'd like to add, if we can get uh. In coffee for bylaw from Ontario, that shows that. Get uh them to come up with a management plan for their carts. They may come up with something, if they gotta deal with them all the time. They're probably more aware of what they can do to their carts than we can. I don't know what they pay for each one of those carts. Can't do that much if they're just letting them go to the ladder, but um. It'd be better than us trying to please them more than just saying, come up with a management plan, what they can do. And I'm just trying to think of staff's time here, if you can get a bylaw from somebody else that we can take a look at. Maybe there's something there where people have already thought about this toward.
So I'd suggest then if council wants to see more on this, that we scour some of the information from other communities and bring that back as information. Before we engage legal or anyone else's costs. Um so we'll just do a cursory look across the country. See what we can find added and then council could tell us at that point, if you're interested in us investing the further time in it or not.
Thank you. Is everybody in agreement with that? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Carter. Questioning is the cost. Who's responsible?
Under our current one, it would be a fine where they basically have to redeem, uh but we could bring four other models if we could find them. From the country, uh we could also, it would have to go to legal, but you could see, could it be leaned against the property as an outstanding bylaw infraction? Which we've never done it that way, but um we could look into some other models, but I I would give the answer that.
So in the past, few years ago, we did, were picking up the carts and taking them to the city yard. And that resulted in hundreds of carts sitting at the city yard, nobody picking them up. So we didn't make any money um. Maybe when the vendor took them to the scrap dealer, but it was a lot of work for us picking them up. And then it was costing us, so I think this is something that we have to uh look into when we're, when making these deals, so. Uh and the plan is okay to get to start the initial cursory, looking at what other communities do? Okay, thank you. Uh next is uh recreation. Nine point one is a memo from the Director of Recreation Services. In regards to advertising on baseball.
Uh so Thompson U eighteen baseball, uh they have not been active in the community for a number of years. Um they just started up again, probably about a week before the season started. Um and they're looking at ways to fundraise um to make the sport uh. Feasible for um all, all kids. Um so they're actually asking for permission to sell advertisements based on the fence, which is located. Um there'd be no cost to the city, the group would be responsible for any contacts, installation and removal of the uh banner of the awards. We currently do not have anything in our basement fines um. For us as a city um to do that. We only have in our basement fines right now for us, put advertisements up in the uh. The two arenas and the locking trunk. Um so I just about a few different recommendations or options. Uh we allow them to go ahead and do as they're requesting. Um or they do it and a percentage, I put fifty percent, but it could be a percentage of the fees would be split uh coming back to the city and that would. Be kept to um upkeep of the deal. And then at that, so you can probably install any boards and we still be responsible for everything else. Um there's actually two um. There's that merchant media as well as U eighteen, so do we provide both groups the opportunity to fundraise slots? Probably a good option.
Thank you. In one part I read that the city would install and then the other part it said that the baseball teams would install.
So if they were to do it themselves, they would do everything. So if we allowed them to do it, they would install it, they would do the contracts, they would do everything. If they were. Split or give the city a percentage of the fees that they collect, then the city could probably install and then they would do everything else.
So would we set up a contract that can so that things are sorted done in a proper way?
Okay, again, those are just some suggestions that I've got for your.
Okay, questions?
I appreciate the creativity and um it's not costing us to not have the space that isn't even being used right now. So great, great idea. Um I appreciate that we get something back for. Cutting the grass, putting lines in um. And upkeep of the, of the signs, I guess, and putting the sign like that. I think we have to. On the center of where we put them, make sure you know, sharp edges and stuff, there's more than one of us that goes after a fly ball. You wanna smack yourself in a corner of. Sign, I'm sure that would be with, but um speak on this in a that. Love the idea, I'm sure that love. I'm sure that there's a little more work to do before we we pass this, but I'm looking forward to. Uh solution. I don't think we need fifty percent, but because we're not getting anything right now. They have a good idea and helps young youth under eighteen um do some recreation in the summer. We need it.
Thank you. Councilor O'Kooper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um my question's also what the current user fees are for them to utilize the baseball diamond. Um and if the fees that we're collecting um. Cover what it costs us to maintain those uh fields.
I'm going to use the fines and check, I think they're similar to the soccer. They're they're quite large, they're similar to the soccer base. Would it? Definitely cover, probably the less, um because again, they're writing credit that we just purchased. I can get some numbers from public works because they're responsible for that, but if you're willing to.
Is there any safety concerns um if we were to proceed with the option where they're installing them? Were we allowing them to install them or liability concerns?
So apparently years ago, probably ten plus years ago, um they did do it. So right now, there's actually currently twelve. Signs still up at the next year. So if you kind of drive by, I think they look like, I didn't go close up to them, but they look like they're at least. It's thirty three fifteen with taxes and or. Each time they use it, correct? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor O'Kooper.
And we're not in budget yet. Um and it'd be nice to have some of the numbers for that, but I want to make other councils aware and I will. Some of you haven't seen uh the cost associated with or the TRCC. We don't make money on having on. Uh there's no way, you know, you are taxpayer to pay at least. Five hundred thousand dollars a year to run that arena, at least um. No matter what we do in there, it's great that we have people in there using it, uh getting some recreation and. That's great to have those user fees. But the big thing, I think, with this is like baseball, what does it cost us? Both the grass and the fence um, there are a lot of extravagant costs um. For for thirty three dollars to pay to run that uh play baseball. This would help with getting people out there, reduce the cost for a person that's using, utilizing the facility. And um I I honestly like to see those, all that is used a lot more. Which I had the time to play every couple of days, but yeah, but still, yeah, that's stupid enough, but I'd probably try to let some heart attack or. Looking forward to seeing, so nobody's sure what we do back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony?
Does council have a preference on those three options or a different uh preference to move on? And did you want us to bring this forward, uh like basically give permission to a group, or did you want to reserve your judgment at this time?
Who wants to um bring it forward? Uh with their, after they've negotiated, negotiated, talked to the teams or do we want to make a difference?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, can I ask a question with all of the board? Uh when you say fifty fifty? Have you guys figured out, do we have enough staff to take care of it? Let's say we want to do that model. To to let them use the place and and advertise, advertise and and fifty, do we look install? Do we have enough? People to take care of that part of that?
Um come up with ideas, I would have the staff to do that, that would be uh the carpenters, so I would have to check the file. Uh and Stephen Allen to see if they got.
The reason I'm asking, if if you don't have enough staff to do that, that 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 suggestion is off the table. Right? Why you would bother to think about it, right? So unless we do have a staff level to do it, so.
Yeah, my recommendation would be looking at number one or number three, um just to reduce the burden or staff.
I agree. I have a concert pitch back.
Uh I'm gonna go with Anthony's suggestion because uh it gives them initiative to uh fundraise and uh. They've said they want to do this, so I think we need to encourage them.
Number three, we're three. Sorry, and then I'd also um recommend that maybe the message has to be approved by the city. So something obnoxious isn't put out on the sign and then council will be blamed for that. Um so maybe having um. They take care of it, either way council goes, but that it has, the message has to run through the city.
Okay, so everybody in agreement with that?
We need to know which option you're going with. Is it one group gets it all, runs it all, or is it splitting it between the two groups?
Splitting two, I just get it. Number three. I need a concern.
Number three, what's for number three? So shall I let them know that they can go ahead now and start doing that or does it need to go to elsewhere, just because their season is quite short?
We could take care, we'll take it with administration.
Okay, thank you.
It's nine point two. It's a memo from the Director of Recreation Community Services in regards. The request for space for the returning officer for provincial elections.
So there's elections coming up uh in October and there is not a lot of rental spaces available in the uh the community, especially since the fire. At um shop and bar. Um so we've been approached by the returning officer with the provincial election to use. Three of the spaces that the TRCC from August first on October thirty, and we want to use the multi-purpose room, the Mary Fisky Boardroom and the Turner Room. Oh wait, I I don't have any problem with them using the um Mary Fisky Boardroom, however. Then using the multi-purpose room for from August to October really takes away any opportunity for us to have any programming. Uh for birthday parties, uh our mental coordinator really wouldn't be able to do any K nights or sign making, pottery classes. We do have quite a few things already that are supposed to go in there. Uh we wouldn't be able to do our Halloween event this year. We have over eight hundred. Uh people visit that, but they're not truly here, but I think to have. Um I do have um some other suggestions that they can use space in the TRCC. We have two, possibly three empty offices at many regions. We can set some things up and tell them to decide what we're doing, the place structure, where we can put some office desks and the equipment to use. So we do have alternate space um for them to use and decide to leave the the multi-purpose room. So um there, I don't, we don't have their letter attached, um but I believe. Um there, I think it's one thousand dollars, somebody said they can pay us um per month for August and September and October.
Yeah, so it's really coming down to a question for council of how do you want that space used? Do you want the city to be prioritizing? It available for recreational uses over the next three months, um with no certain bookings? Or do you want to take that booking where you know there's a certain four thousand dollar per month and then it is used exclusively for elections? So it's really clarity on um your fees and fines and the offer for the payment. Do you prefer to have it used? Open for rec or do you want it to be used for the election?
Thank you.
I would definitely prefer to see if we can find other space uh besides the main service room for sure, no one. We're shy of recreational space at that time of year. We know that our weather can start turning at that time, people are starting to move inside, you know. These are September long weekends when most of our baseball is winding up, so remember we go. Long official, uh there's a lot of people that started using those uh. Which facilities. So if if there's anything we can do to define the space that they can use, that doesn't. That we find that, is that our squash court isn't built yet? Is that one of the places that they talk about using? Is there a reason why we're not using the schools anymore for elections?
This is not for the actual election, this is for all the work that goes into building up to the election, the office spaces. Uh getting people registered uh doing the the office for the knock. Right, Councilor McCuyver?
Thank you, Madam. I would um would keep the recreation and. Put the election somewhere else. Bad enough, we have, we don't really have anything in the community for recreation. If I um think even with the baseball, then not everybody plays baseball, not everybody plays hockey and then we have all our game room and everything. They all that space.
Thank you, Mayor. Um but again, I'm interviewing with Council McCuyver and Council O'Kooper. Um. You said that here, the Mary Fisky Boardroom was available, correct? That really wouldn't affect recreation. Have you tried coordinating anything with U C N as they, they have lots of. Bacon office space, if we can coordinate to. Right, we have our Mary Fisky Boardroom, they have provided one.
Um I'm not too sure what, what they've done and what she's. I don't know who last assumption or not, but um they very well could have checked in with them already and they didn't.
Yeah, so the city hasn't done too much coordinating because the request was from elections, they really want this room, so they haven't done work for them on that, but.
If I read your memo right, so they request, are they request all three or just just suggest one of them?
All three.
They need all three. So, okay, you said the uh the Mary Fisky room, no problem.
The only thing with the Mary Fisky Boardroom is that the beer gardens would be um. Will take place. Unless they would remove all their stuff uh on that night, but I don't think that would be.
No, the request is for them to have a continuous thing. Once it's rented, they would have exclusive use to it during that period.
So do you have any pre-book for the uh multi-purpose room?
Me too.
For that time of the period? And what is the uh pre-book? Where revenue would look like?
Revenue, I'm not too sure. Um I know we've brought a gentleman that makes many town, we're doing some pottery class, and I believe there's a. Um a couple workshops that are booked in there, it's probably a birthday party.
Because to me, it's about money side, right? So let's say the people is only worth of two thousand dollars a year. They are willing to pay four thousand, right? So there's no brainer, there's a four thousand, I'd rather take the four thousand and don't take the pre-book, or willing to book. Unless the pre-book is going to be more than the four thousand, then, you know, they dead.
I will have her.
It's always, always that come down to the number.
Our best coordinator at that point, if those rooms are open, there's really nothing for her to be able to plan within the building, one month, August, September, and October. So she would have. Yeah, so pretty much we will know place for her to go and then activities within that one.
Have we looked at some of the options of us using the the um, tournament room and things like that, or other smaller rooms, those offices, like I know there was concern if there was painting or something, could that be done in uh, the offices or, you know, the old playground, things like that, but we don't sort of talk our options out to?
Yes, they're they're quite small. Uh, most times we do have a um, a paint night, we need a minimum of fifteen people to be able to pay, uh, to have a cost control, be able to pay uh, for instructors, so those rooms are quite small. Um, the tournament room, I don't believe that, I can't remember the capacity, but it's not big.
And I think that's problem that elections is up against too, is a bunch of small rooms, I need at least one main size room uh, to hold there, so. Anthony?
So uh, just wondering if council would like to make a decision tonight, or did you want us to bring back those revenues before you make a decision? Just looking for a consensus of how you want to proceed this evening.
I'd say make the decision right now, and my say is no.
Counselor, over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to clarify, so the plan that you're proposing, we would not have to cancel any existing bookings then, if they're willing to accept that plan, correct? Anthony?
Yeah, I think the thing is that that the plan is not what they're interested in, right? So it's really, they they've been presented that plan, they're not interested in that, they're asking, will council rent them these rooms? So that's more what it is. They, that's the request they've made.
Uh, oh, one question, sorry. Have we spoken to any of the parties that would be affected if we had to cancel? Um, like especially if they would think like the North Stars, right, that they have a long-term booking, I'm sure that any of those groups that would like typically about reserved in advance.
We have this, I just hope we have it, so they don't want to reach out with the most things happening. It was going to happen.
Yeah, I guess I'm more just wondering if there is perhaps something that they would be able to do also, or that we can accommodate.
So a lot of spaces, they don't sit together, right, even the birthday cards, especially the fantasy house, like that's more going to be influenced quite a bit, um, that's what fantasy houses involve for birthday cards. So really, we have a couple different uh, options in the months of running, birthday parties on the side of, second one.
Counselor Lomar?
I'm thinking that we teamed up with the curling bubble, don't think they do much there in September, October, until the middle of October. Isn't the election middle of October? I know they're saying.
October third.
So we just be putting the ice in the curling bubble, I don't know, we can talk to them just to see if, if you take for the big building, right? Because the the upstairs of the curling bubble, they have access to that, maybe that would get rid of the multi-purpose room inside for us. This bringing another service could benefit from this um. It's an idea, I don't know how much work that is for staff to ask the the executive over there. But if we took our share with the the facilities that we have, in Thompson, there used to be twenty seven thousand people, but a lot less buildings being shared, so just thinking of. And maybe we get closer with the executive over there too. That's all.
Thank you.
Just an option.
Okay, so do we want to make a decision tonight, or do we want to get revenue information? Uh, or? Brian?
Like with revenue and and just maybe ask that is. Take a decision after that.
Lomar?
I agree.
Anyone else? Okay.
I agree with him.
Or two?
I made my position earlier, I'm totally against it, there will, there is other space in town, I know there's not a lot. And they're just not digging. Thank you.
Well, by show of hands, who wants to go with revenue projections? And? Somebody, and who wants revenue projection? Okay, and who wants to just say more? That's okay.
Yeah, please.
Okay, we will refer to some revenue projections and some ideas. Next, we're going to legislate it. Ten point one is a memo from the City Manager in regards to cloud-based infrastructure for a city asset management. Anthony?
Yeah, so the city chops have been working on Lucidity Asset Management System, a number of the databases have been developed, but now we need a place to host it. Um, and the two options are really, do we put it into a physical space at City Hall where it lives on a server? Operates off of that, where we own the infrastructure, or do we use the more uh, web-based, cloud-based approach? Um, to run this system. Um, so we reached out to our partners, uh, both um, Central Square, who produces Lucidity um, for their hosting methods, which are cloud-based, as well as our I T service provider, which is Epic, to look at our options. We put those options together for council, the one that looks the most cost-effective is to use a cloud-based service, uh, that would be set up through Epic. Um, that is called I A S, um, that'd be most cost-effective, we wouldn't have to be updating our hardware or software. Um, once this decision is made, we can move to the next step of providing our asset manager for the city of Thompson, so. We're looking for council to endorse the administration's recommendation that we go with the recommended path, that's laid out in the memo, and bring that forward for resolution of council the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Lomar.
I like who was the recommended path, what the, some, you know, the options there and we already work with Epic, uh, they're familiar with what we have, uh, I'm sure that they're more familiar with the new Lucidity, like a lot more than setting square and provided, but uh, in the hookups, uh, and what they're planning to do already, so it would be uh, in support of the administration's recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, who else is in favor of this or wants to speak on it? Uh, did you want to speak on it, Dr.?
Yes. So this uh, set up the year and this, that one time, or what what is the Epic I A A?
Yeah, so there's two costs there, so that you could see, there's the one-time cost, which is called the setup fee, and then there's a monthly fee going forward.
Okay.
So you'll see that Central Square's setup fee was nineteen thousand five hundred, Epic's cloud setup fee is five thousand eight hundred. And Epic's setting up a server, City Hall is thirty nine thousand four hundred. Uh, the monthly fees moving forward with Central Square would be three thousand dollars a month. With Epic cloud base would be one thousand four hundred, and with Epic, if we own the soft or hardware, we would have to do an adjustment to our M S A that was recently passed to add extra services onto that.
Okay, Councilor Lomar?
My question is this, uh, where is this money coming from?
This would be something that council would have to add into its budget. So as part of uh, the asset management program that council directed us to develop, so we do have money from valet, but that's one-time grant. But this would be something that would have to be supported moving forward.
Yeah, so you know, you you talk about this could be into this year budget.
Yes, this would have to be incorporated into this year's budget.
So my question is, how can we, we approve this money, where we don't even have a budget approved yet, or add into the budget?
We can always delay, we could always delay it if council doesn't want to pass the resolution at this time, that'll just hold back the project until budget's finalized. Otherwise, we could always just build it into the budget as council wants.
Because I just don't want to be put a cart before the horse, right? So if we do, we don't even have a budget yet. So this number we cannot put into until we get that number clear, what we can spend, that's how I I look at it.
So council's preference is that we wait, but this is the recommended one, I'd ask for a consensus that it's the recommended one, and then we just put it into budget and it being a base until budget is passed.
Anybody else? Comment?
Counselor over. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to say that I'm in agreement with Anthony's recommendation regarding um, the recommended path, um, and that we hold off on proceeding until we go through the budget process.
Okay, on final. Earl?
Do we present this into the budget when we have our budget meeting?
So that's what I'm asking for a consensus, so this is the recommended path, and that's what council wants to do. We will add it to budget and then it would be passed as part of budget, rather than coming as a standard resolution. So I have to get a consensus tonight on how you.
So my question is, uh, how much delay is this going to cost, if, or it's going to cause if we wait until the whole budget process is done, and we're sort of willing to recommend it?
Um, at this point, it's already been delayed about four to five months, so it really will make, if the budget's done within a month, it really makes not, not a big difference. That's its point.
Thank you. Betty further?
I recommend that to go with that.
Pardon?
Oh, when you just said delay it.
Okay, by show of hands, who wants, willing to delay it? Yeah, okay.
So I'm asking though, is that the endorsement that we want to move toward on the recommended path?
On the recommended path, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Ten point two?
Quick question to go with that, um. Not that I'm in for, in for a penny, in for a pound, but uh, how much have we spent on Lucidity so far, and without this, nothing is going forward with any of our uh, one of the big things that we worked on last term was, was getting this asset management program so that we know what's going on, we plan for maintenance, we plan and and we see where there's problems and and we get more efficient with what we're doing. This is the big thing, uh, how much, when do you know, how much money we spent so far on Lucidity and uh, and how much will we be using that?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number tonight, uh, because that's not what I was ready to jump on, but um, I believe we pay about twenty eight thousand dollars a year towards Lucidity, which is currently covered by the ground from valet. So whether it's, like I said, they're still working on on their end, it's just not live on our end, um.
Excellent.
But there's a consensus in council.
Consensus, we'll, we'll wait, okay. Next is a memo from the Safety Officer in regards to Emergency Management Organization Portal Information. Sharing agreement between Manitoba Government and the City of Thompson.
So emergency measures has set up a portal which would allow for sharing of information during emergencies. I think this is a response to the number of emergencies we've seen in the province, though for the city of Thompson to use it, we have to sign this agreement. So it's a bit of a housekeeping item, uh, administration is recommending that council approve us signing this, it's at no cost to the city. It just lays out what's allowed to be shared and what isn't in the portal, um, so if uh, if uh, the council's an endorsement of this, we bring it to the next uh, meeting of council for resolution.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, who's willing to, uh, by show of hands, who's willing to perform it next comes? Okay, Carrie. Next is a letter from the Minister of Municipal Relation in regards to twenty twenty-three municipal operating grant, uh, second payment, Anthony?
Yeah, this is a letter from uh, Honorable Andrew Smith, the Minister of Municipal Relations, outlining the quarter two payment to the City of Thompson. Um, really for information of council, and that there will be a third payment coming later on in the year.
Any questions? Comments? I think this is a good news story, that money is coming in. Next, we have a letter from Manitoba Acute Coronary Syndrome uh, Network in regards to updating the emergency services to include um, having nine-one-one in Thompson.
Yeah, so it's just a letter received for information for council's consideration, requesting that the City of Thompson set up a nine-one-one service. Currently in the province, the City of Brandon, through their emergency dispatch center, runs the nine-one-one service. Um, but in the past, council has not been interested in joining their service, has instead maintained the different numbers. Um, council's options, if you wanted to proceed with this, um, really, it's it's your discussion if you even want to discuss this or not. Um, we take your direction from there and give you what your options are.
I'm just going to make a couple of comments. First, we did uh, approach this about fifteen years ago, about having the nine-one-one service, actually a northern nine-one-one service, so that if something ever happened to the Brandon or that, then you'd have an alternate service and that, we were working on that, we needed it in regards to our uh, emergency services here to see how it worked, uh. We were getting there and then all of a sudden it it just got dropped. I guess my only concern is the nine-one-one service, it will be like, is it going to be like the R C and P service where you just deal with Brandon and uh, again, you're on the phone for ten or ten minutes, it seems like, getting all your information. Uh, but trying to find out where the direction, what streets were on, uh, they don't, uh, I I think I'd like, uh, maybe Steve to refine this too, but oh, first, before we go to council?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I I raised a concern many times over the last few years with respect to this, this is vital to to not only to the City of Thompson, it was vital to the north as 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 a whole, simply because, I mean, we are servicing sixty thousand people. Uh, the memo does state quite clearly, it does save lives, I mean, I've been on on the phone with M T C C, you know, calling for service on my own department. And uh, it's frustrating at best. Uh, oftentimes, we've been tracking uh, deterrent calls that that are determinants is why the M T C C tells us how to how to respond to an emergency in our community, and more times than not, we're actually arriving on the scene even before the deterrent is given. We've had multiple calls with respect to wrong addresses, we've had multiple calls through M T C C with respect to responding to other communities, including not limited to the Ball, Flint Block, Leaf Rapids, Lynn Lake. And in fact, I believe they had two calls to Brandon. So, and the fact that M T C C does not have a backup, and they're operating out of the Brandon hospital. Uh, it only, it only makes sense for for Thompson to be to be the backup center to not know, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was thinking of this because I believe, I I remember the first time we already had that discussion. John, and we had the same concern, the delay, and basically, if we do, if we think in ourselves, the response time, I want less than five or three minutes, and with them, we talk about what group of the time, so. Anyway, I I myself, I don't see a value of it. I myself, I thought it's up to all the rest of the the council that have a different idea or perspective, so thank you.
Counselor Fitzpatrick, or so you're?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think this is a good service for Thompson to have, I know a lot of concerned citizens in Thompson have been asking about it and pretty much demanding that, why don't we have this? Because they've been frustrated, like Steve has said, they're, they're on the phone for half an hour to try and get an ambulance over to a, a customer or wherever. I mean, we do service the entire north up here, we know the communities, I think it'd be a value added to the north.
I I think.
Yeah, so I think we have to provide some clarity here, so having a nine-one-one service, you'd have to then either two things would either have to happen, one, you're joining Brandon's, that everything's being dispatched to Brandon. Or two, you'd have to set up your own at your own cost. So you'd have to have your own dispatch center with the people trained, up to those standards and maintain that dispatch center. Um, and I've talked to the province, you would not receive any funding from the province, so the way the Brandon model works is they receive fees from other communities to provide them a nine-one-one service. So if council wanted to do that, you'd either have to fund that nine-one-one center here, or you'd have to try to find northern customers to help uh, fund your cost to run that center. So it's really comes down to those two issues, if you're interested in a nine-one-one, we have to bring that forward and show you, this is what it would cost to run your own. Or you're going to have to join Brandon and that service is out of your hands, which would then affect our dispatching here. So just so that you're clear on on what your, what your interest is, and if you have a different, if you want us to bring this forward for scenarios, for you to look at, so considering the cost, it'd probably become a budgetary issue.
And just another thing with this being centralized down to Brandon, if anybody is uh, remembers when the R C and P, when we used to have our system up here and it was answered, now that it's answered over Winnipeg or wherever, uh, you can sometimes be on the phone a long time when it's into a central dispatch, it was a nine-one-one northern flavor, I definitely uh, would support it totally, going to uh, nine-one-one just problems wide, I would have troubles for that. Councilor Kreider?
Thank you, Madam.
Councilor Edward, I missed you, but I'll get you there. Uh, my question is, like, if it's like for the northern parts, nine-one-one, so it would be connected to Brandon, but it wouldn't um.
Uh my question is, like, if it's like for the northern part, nine-one-one, so we're would be connected to Brandon, but it wouldn't um. What I would look for is for the north, because of our surrounding communities, would they be involved in in the nine-one-one? Like, we have Thompson, they constantly have their own. But like with right now, it goes to Brandon, right? And then we have to wait and all this, but like I said, it's where if we have to pay for everything on our own and nothing, then. We have our nine-one-one here just specifically from Thompson. Will that affect our surrounding communities? They get, would they still own um? Like telecoms and um. When there's.
When we were talking about this before, one of the holdups was especially for the north, especially your small communities. Uh you go to Pickwick today or Pickwick Ford, you can have host twenty-nine, host thirty-one. Uh that wasn't going to cut it, there was going to, they were going to have to have legal addresses. Uh for all the north to make it for the one. Anthony?
Yes, I've already spoke to the province about this. It would be each community's decision. So there's no guarantee that they would join a northern nine-one-one. It's up to them, and you'd have to base it on the fees that you're charging the service you provide. So it's basically you're setting up a nine-one-one, you're setting up a business almost, um and then it's up to them if they buy your product or someone else's product.
Okay, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we paying fees to Brandon?
Um no, because we're not in the nine-one-one service. So right now, we have our own internal dispatch that is for fire. Uh for ambulance, when you are sorry for um RCMP, when you call that, I believe it's a dispatch center in Winnipeg that responds to that. If you're on a cell phone and you call nine-one-one, I believe that gets sent to Brandon, but that's through the MTS network. From a landline, it's one of those one-two numbers.
Anyone else?
Councilor. Thank you, Madam. Um. I assume when we looked at this option in the past, the reason that. We didn't go through due to the cost that it would be to establish a center in the north? Anthony?
I don't know how detailed the models were ever developed on this, to be honest. I think it was always at a discussion level. Um and I believe there was lobbying that the province should pay money to help set it up, and the province has always said, no, they're not going to pay money to help set it up. So if uh if council wanted the administration to invest the time in doing this, we would have to develop something to bring to you. Um right now, I've only just had discussions with EMO on different levels of the province. But we haven't invested a huge amount of work because there hasn't been a will of council to move much forward beyond discussion.
Anyone else? Councilor.
I don't know, what what I hear so far, it sounds like, and I heard last term, is that if we went with that and went on the brand. We'd be waiting way longer. And um. And we came for a service that's slower than what we have right now. Like, I know my old RCMP at Winnipeg were, it was incredibly slow, um how much time I was taking to talk to somebody, but. Uh the other time, I went out six, seven, seven number and. See, I got those mixed up already, right? Because seven, seven, eight. So when I spoke to somebody here. Um a young gentleman fell in front of my yard, and the RCMP were there before I even. Told them any of the information of what happened. Uh and then I was. Um. When I talk to people at Winnipeg or wherever, it was like, oh, no, no, no. Was on the phone for five, ten minutes before they got through everything, and I said, no, 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 I'm I'm seventy-one surgeon, and she was trying to put me through to some place in. I I can't remember where it was, I think it was. Oh, what had come up. I still have in Thompson, Manitoba, anyway, um. I think nine-one-one would be incredible if we had it here. I don't know how that could help our like communities very much, because it sound like our fire department's not going to go to some place in Pickwick today. We can't float the engine over there uh. And we're not going to take that sixty kilometer ride on the ice roads. Um. But as for like dispatching area ambulance or something, I think that goes for a different role anyway. I I just don't know how useful it will be to anybody besides maybe Gillum, Lake Rapids, Willmore. Um. So I think we'd be basically on our own. Um. If we could get them to buy in for like what we needed in area ambulance, and we'd be able to get our ambulance up at the airport to pick someone up maybe, but I I think this needs to be looked at more. I don't know what it would cost us to change our number to nine-one-one. And how staff train order here, I I don't know. I think we need to research.
I don't even know if we could do that.
Yeah.
Okay, Anthony.
So a question, is this uh received different information, and that's it, or does the council want us to action this somehow?
I think, can we bring it back to council at another time? I think between budget and other things, we have too much going on. Uh maybe come fall when we have ten more things in our papers than we're going to have. Who agrees with that, that we just table it for now? Post a table in the firm? Okay. So we see. Next, the letter from Manitoba Hydro in regards to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Manitoba Hydro uh engagement.
Yeah, so these are just reports that are sent to the mayor and council from Manitoba Hydro, receiving for information um. They're really for your review, and if you have any questions, we will send them back to Hydro, as our administration prepared, and we're not ready to respond to questions on them. So. If you have any questions, let us know, we'll send them on to Hydro, get that back to you.
Councilor.
They're glad to see this again. Uh they don't get the development review committee, we got these from Hydro all the time, but it was also. Where they tell us the changes in the level of lake and things that we can get to uh CHG and to um the nickel belt and Thompson citizens, so they know. Uh the changes in the level of lake or for the river, sorry, um. And it was the community, the whole meeting, it just thought uh it would be a good idea to bring that part back, uh so we could disperse that information through here. And that might be, thanks for receiving your question.
Thanks. Anyone else? Thank you. Seeing that, I would like to remind people that Nickel Days is coming up this weekend. Um it's going to be a very busy time in our town. Uh please uh watch your children, watch everybody else's children, uh especially at Nickel Days and that. Uh there will be a child find at Nickel Days, lots of events going on, uh so please uh go have fun, but uh you. Take it easy. That I call for adjournment. What comes from the higher, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have um one. Request. Um everybody, including the RCMP, the fire department, DMS, and the city, and whatever, magic trucking. Um to put in the batteries, to put in the bed. That's my um. Yeah, that's Canada Day. So um I'm still waiting. I have. Three. Three responses already.
So is this at Nickel Days?
This is, no, this is Canada Day.
Canada Day, okay. So wherever is Canada Day, folks?
Whoever's this.
It doesn't matter to the council and crew?
Yeah, I guess she's on the city manager's. But it's where, it doesn't matter if it's a business, if it's friends and all that, I said it's where uh. I'm just going to keep adding it on, adding it on, the reporting, putting wherever I can, and that's in um. The two days um responding to that. The challenge, the challenge from the mayor and council. Thank you very much. Would that call for adjournment? Um for Colbert, Councilor McGregor, all in favor?
Yes, yeah, council, remember, we're going to go back.